Ms. Marshall, roll call.
Mr. Armour.
Here.
Mrs. Danny.
Here.
Mr. Doperty.
Here.
Mrs. Esler.
Here.
Ms. Hilford.
Here.
Mrs. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Powell. Ms. Stone.
Here.
Mr. Tinsley.
Here. Next on the agenda is 2.01, the approval of minutes. This motion is approved in the minutes of the random meeting of April 26, 2017. Do I have this motion?
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes. 2.02 is the invoice listing. And this motion is to approve the invoice listing of April 2017 through May 2017. Do I have this motion?
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes. 2.03 is the Treasury report. Mr. Armour?
Treasury report, motions to approve the Treasury's report for April 2017. As of 3/31/2017, Pendelco's balance was $36,908,410. During April 2017, local, state, and federal revenues totaled $1,696,539. Disbursements were issued in the amount of $3,182,355. As of 4/30/2017, Pendelco's current balance is $35,422,594. Do I have this motion?
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes. 2.04 is the budget transfer report. This motion is to approve the budget transfer report as presented. Do I have this motion?
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes. 2.05 is the supplemental financial information that includes expenditures, revenue, and student activity. Number three, staff student and community recognition. First is the Sun Valley girls softball team, the Chessmont American Division Champions. First I can start it. I want to congratulate the Sun Valley softball team for an outstanding season and winning the championship title in the Chessmont League. I remember reading a couple weeks ago about Matty's pitching gem and Claudia's three RBIs, I guess rusted. We assure Vanguard players and coaches everywhere will be watching as the softball team continues to play this season, especially against Upper Morland tomorrow. Finally, the school board would like to inform the team that we of the district will be paying for jackets for this accomplishment. The exact writing on the jacket depends on how you do on districts. From there, I'd like to hand off to Dr. Steinoff for a couple more words.
Thank you, Mr. Tinsley. The May board meeting is often, really one of the better ones. We have an opportunity to recognize our retirees. Typically, at this time of year, we also recognize students for awards. We're doing that tonight with our Young Authors Award winners. But we really didn't expect that we packed the house with a championship team. And to have one of our teams from Sun Valley win the Chessmont American Division Championship really made us proud. I was able to get out to one of the games, I think it was a, you were racking up some points at your senior game. And I went out thinking it was Canada, but it wasn't Canada. And I went out thinking it was, you know, one of those difficult teams here and we're going to call them a guest. And I was extremely impressed with what I saw. I think, of course, we all had the talent that these girls have. You make us proud. And a lot of times, people say, well, Sun Valley's a small school and it's just hard for them to go up against these really big powerhouse teams in the Chessmont that are double, triple our size. And the girls of Sun Valley pulled it off and they did that. And I concur with the board president's recommendation that the administration move forward and get them some jackets. Mr. Crater was saying, well, I don't know if it's jackets or it's more like Under Armour pull-ups or something. But we certainly will make sure that you have a memento and a keepsake for this accomplishment. And I agree with him. The season's not over yet. We will follow along and see how you do. I had asked Mr. Crater whether there's some highlights that I should mention. And he very quickly got back to me. He said, how about notable wins? Against Westchester Henderson, scored six runs in the top of the last inning to overcome a 6-2 deficit. Remember that one? At Merses Great Valley, you were down 7-5 in top of the last innings, tied on a two-run homerun by Carly Williams. Won it on a solo homerun by Madison Coons. We have first team Fall Chessmont winners in Mackenzie Lewis, Madison Guttwitz, Lana Lloyd. And second team winners in Richard Thomas, Carl Williams, and Claudia Davis. Mackenzie Lewis also earned her 100th career hit against Unionville. And I remember retweeting that picture, I think, which was a really great one. Fantastic group of coaches. No question about it, it's been a great season for the girls. So we would like to take your picture, bring you up, and present this certificate to you. And jackets will be on our way.
Next, for staff student and community recognition, Young Author Award winners. Ms. Mary?
Good evening. So it's my great pleasure this evening to recognize the district winners in the 2017 Dr. Nicholas Spinato Young Authors Writing Project and to celebrate this accomplishment. This project is celebrating its 39th year. It is one of the longest-running projects of its kind. Students in grades 1 through 8 in public and non-public schools submit a piece of writing of their choice. This year, over 800 entries were sent in and 103 winners were named. We are here tonight to recognize our nine winners. On May 10th, all of the winners joined together at Northly Middle School to celebrate. They received a certificate of recognition and a bound copy of all the winning entries. Author and illustrator Roger Roth shared his experiences with the young authors and their families. The writers can revisit a piece already in progress and complete it or start with a new idea. The piece must be written on their own without teacher conferencing. Published authors tell us that they find ideas in their own lives with experiences that they've had, as well as the world around them. The students have to decide what they can write about that will make their story stand out. Well, the students who are here with us tonight got it right. And as you listen to the titles of the winning pieces, you will hear a variety of topics. I am proud to present to you the 2017 Young Author winners. Please hold your applause until all the winners have been announced. When your name is called, come up to the center. They will be receiving a certificate and also a gift card to Barnes &amp; Noble. In grade one, we have Leah Eastman for Crayon's Sad Letter. We have Leah Forlee for Alina's Wings. Mara Longquist, The Cookie Thief. Savannah Schmitz, Eva the Hero. Eva Schinkel for The Missing Princess. Arianna Spence for Tim Can. Unfortunately, Arianna was sent home from school six today, so we're going to congratulate her and make sure she gets her recognition. Jessica Hassel for The Unmasked Fear. Abigail Chambers for Macy. And Paige Baucher for I Don't Belong. And Paige was unable to join us this evening. So when asked, authors will tell you that there are many influences and experiences in his life that contribute to their success. And so it is true with our young authors. As you listen to the titles, you heard a wide variety of topics, some narrative and some informational. Parents, thank you for your support at home. Teachers, thank you for your instruction and motivation that happens every day in our classrooms. To the reading specialists, Michelle, Karen, Julie, Mary, and Nicole, and Allison, Rockia at Northly. I thank you for all you did in your schools to support this project. Congratulations. An author's success in writing is also influenced by his reading. Congratulations to you all for your achievement.
Next, for staff student and community recognition, Pendelco School District retirees. Dr. Steinoff?
Thank you, Ken, Mr. Tinsley. A few years back, I can recall the school board saying to me, you know, we see the names of employees listed on the agenda indicating that we are approving their retirement. And yet, we don't have an opportunity to really properly say thank you for the job well done. And at that time, we decided to invite our retirees to come out to the Pendelco Board of School Director meetings each May. And the years go by so quickly. And we go from June to May, and here we are again with what is always a very kind of bittersweet meeting for the school board and certainly for myself. I'm always really thrilled and really excited for the retirees, knowing how many days I have left until mine comes. But we're also saddened to lose really good people. People who have decided that they wanted to make a career in Pendelco. And we invite our retirees to come out and to be recognized with a few words by their supervisors. But I must tell you that with the four retirees that we have tonight, we have a lot of people in our district who could say very kind things. Because their reach and their role as a teacher's aide, as a security guard, as work as custodian, as work as a teacher in a J-Rozzy program was pretty deep. And they will leave a legacy. Teachers and staff that worked with them, this particular group, will all say the same thing. These are really great people that were wonderful to have in Pendelco. And we would like to recognize our retirees for this year who were able to come out and attend the meeting tonight. I'm going to bring up a picture and a name on the board, and I will ask if their supervisor will come up to say a few words. Congratulations to Beth Todak, who I had the pleasure of working with when I was the principal at Panel Elementary. She's truly top-notch. We're excited for you as you begin your retirement. And I will turn it over to Mr. Eric Kaminka, our building principal. Mr. Kaminka?
Thank you, Dr. Steinoff and the school board of directors. It is my privilege. It's a pleasure to say a few words for Mrs. Elizabeth Todak. An honor for 16 years of service and now her retirement from Pendelco School District. Our team at Coburn Elementary works hard to develop the whole child academically, behaviorally, socially, and emotionally. And Mrs. Todak is absolutely a key player on that team. Academically, Mrs. Todak demonstrated effective teaching strategies and had knowledge of her curriculum to help students grow. Behaviorally, the elementary years is where students learn proper behavior. And Mrs. Todak continuously taught our students to apply that good behavior. On occasion, I did have to address her students' fur behaviors. But she was right there telling me, we got this, Mr. Kaminka. He's going to learn these behaviors. And she would then go to work. She would talk to that student, teach that student to never give up teaching him or her proper behavior. Socially, Mrs. Todak modeled and engaged her students in conversations between their peers and with adults, so their students developed appropriate social skills. Emotionally, Mrs. Todak could always be relied on to nurture and provide the TLC a child sometimes needs. Mrs. Todak loves her students and the students' love for her is mutual. Mrs. Todak is the complete player on Coburn's team, and Panel as well when she was there, and will be dearly missed. In addition to supporting our students, Mrs. Todak, you have added to our positive climate and culture at Coburn Elementary School. And I want to thank you for your commitment and passion for our students. And I wish you a healthy and enjoyable retirement. And I hope you enjoy your family, especially your grandchildren. Thank you. Congratulations on your well-deserved retirement.
Good evening. I have the pleasure of presenting to Babu Swani for 14 years. Babo is in the house. It's a little bit of a private joke there. But Babu spent the past 14 years with Pendelco as a security guard, mostly at Northly Middle School, keeping the students, staff, and property safe. Over the years, he became a strong favorite, knowing all students by name. Bab always kept after the students, but there was always a mutual respect that was forged. He became quite the fixture at Northly Middle School and at district sporting events. Most every football game, Bab would police the front gate. I would never have to worry if we had all our bases covered because I knew Bab was taking care of it. He would come in early and stay late to help out, to always help clean up. On games around Halloween, Bab would come in in some sort of costume. Don't ask me what, but... Bab... Excuse me. It's fair to say that Bab definitely has a good sense of humor. One of his favorite events to work was the Fourth of July fireworks, where this was certainly close to his heart as he really became our very own fire chief. Bab resides in the district with his lovely wife and two children. If he's not playing Uber driver, varying one of his kids around, then you can find him volunteering his time with the Brookhaven Fire Police, which I know he loves to do, at the Knights of Columbus or at the Doghouse with the St. James Alumni Association. Bab is leaving us to spend more time with family and his interests, including his new pursuit of crossing guard. So be careful not to run, stop, sign, or jaywalk as you're at the intersection outside Christian Academy. And if you want to see him during the day, that's where he will be. Okay? So Bab, continued success in your luck in your near and your far future. Best of luck.
Good evening, everyone. It's my honor to represent Mr. Mario Fernandez and to say a few words about him this evening. Mr. Fernandez immigrated to the United States from Cuba to make a fresh start in the U.S. Before starting his 17-year career with Pendelco, Mr. Fernandez worked in the special needs program. He started this journey as a security guard with us and for the next 12 years in that role, and then five more years as a custodian. He was a major factor in the success of our events and the operation of our school. Many who have worked with him say Mr. Fernandez was the main reason why home football, basketball, and wrestling contests were set up well and always made Sun Valley look good. Others say that Mr. Fernandez was Mr. Reliable, always being available in a pinch, and especially on weekend activities. He would make sure the teams and other activities have what they needed at all times. Mr. Fernandez was a student favorite. He always got along with him and was a smiling face in the hallway for the student body. He had a soft spot in his heart for students with special needs as well, so he'd be sure to interact with them and spend some extra time with them too. Although I never had the pleasure of working with Mr. Fernandez, it's well-known that he enjoyed the opportunity to take his break with his lovely wife, Rosa. Mr. Fernandez, thank you for your years of service at Pendelco and within the halls of Sun Valley High School. I just want to say, he showed me tonight on his hat, he received a pin from every principal he worked with. And I was lucky enough to have a pin with me to be able to contribute to that. So very happy and very honored to be able to do that tonight. So please join me in congratulating Mr. Mario Fernandez once more. I'm still Patrick Sassy. We have one more tonight. Colonel Tom Ryman was commissioned as a second lieutenant in May of 1977, following graduation from the University of Pennsylvania. His first assignment was as an infantry officer with the 2nd Battalion, 6th Marines. Following a Mediterranean deployment, he was assigned as the commanding officer of the Marine detachment aboard the USS Blue Ridge. Returning to the United States in 1983, then-Captain Ryman was assigned to the 2nd Recruit Training Battalion in San Diego. And after two years on the drill field team, he became the director of the Marine Corps Seaschool. In 1986, he reported to the 1st Marine Division as a staff officer, during which time he earned a master's degree. In July of 1987, he transferred to the 3rd Battalion, 1st Marines, where he served as the headquarters and service company commander. Following a Westpac deployment, he became the regimental adjutant for the 1st Marines and was released from active duty in November of 1990. Returning to Philadelphia, he joined the reserves and served in a wide variety of reserve billets. He was mobilized onto active duty on 9/11 to assist with relief operations and was assigned to the staff of Marine Forces Command in Norfolk, Virginia, where he worked as a planner, excuse me, as the lead planner for homeland defense and disaster preparedness. From December 2001 to April 2002, he served as a planner on the Central Command Staff in Tampa, Florida, and was promoted to Colonel on 1 January 2003. From September 2004 through February 2005, he served with the 2nd MEF Forward in support of the Operation Iraqi Freedom. Returning from Iraq, he continued to work homeland defense issues until his retirement on 1 January 2008. Upon his retirement, Colonel Ryman finally joined us at Pendelco and served as the senior instructor for the Marine Corps JRTC program at Sun Valley High School. This program develops leadership and personal responsibility among high school students and emphasizes community service. Colonel Ryman's personal awards include the Bronze Star, Meritorious Service Medal, Joint Commendation Medal, Navy Commendation Medal, excuse me, Medal, and the Navy Achievement Medal. Colonel Ryman and his wife, Mary Beth, have three children, Jamie, Liesl, and Andrew, and two grandchildren, Alden and Haley. I want to thank Colonel Ryman for his commitment to his family, to the Marine Corps, and to the Sun Valley students and faculty. He has certainly made an impact on the lives of many JRTC cadets, and for that leadership and positive guidance, he will certainly be missed. Congratulations, Colonel Ryman.
Next on the agenda is items for board information. We have a Sun Valley Alumni Association here to speak to us.
Good evening. My name is Russ Replo. I graduated from Class of 1969, and I'm the treasurer of the Sun Valley Alumni Association. It was started about a year and a half ago with the sole purpose of, of course, trying to start a scholarship fund. It's open to any Sun Valley graduate. The dues are $20 a year. We have not yet come up with a lifetime membership. That's going to be coming up in the near future. Our second agenda is to, we have a website that we want people to start using if possible, especially the alumni. We're hoping to be able to let them use that for class reunions, birth of children, whatever, you know, would be interesting to their fellow classmates. Right now, we have probably around 1% membership of the graduating classes. We're trying to get the word out, which is, some people just, you know, at the present time, aren't willing. We're hoping to change their minds. A lot of it has to do with, they don't know. There's people, I'm surprised where people live now. I grew up in Aston, I still live in Aston. But we have one person in Missouri who's trying to get people from that area. We have a lot of graduates in Florida. And anything that, you know, we can do for the school district, put on our website, that's what we want to do. We want to be able to be a conduit of information and be able to help. Anything that you can do as far as, you know, I know there's this thing on the TV that we're going for, trying to get people to join. But anything else you can think of, we're open to any suggestions. The problem is, is that there are members of the board that are hitting their 70s, and they're not going to, you know, do it for a while, you know? It's not going to be a long-term deal for them. Myself, as I said, I graduated in '69, so we're coming up to my 50th class reunion. When my grandchildren become more active in sports in the area or whatever they do, I'm going to be stepping down myself. So, you know, we need to get the word out any way we can. Anything that you can do would be greatly appreciated. If you have any questions that I can try to answer.
What is your website, sir?
The website is Sun Valley High School PA Alumni Association. And there is, you can join through there. We are, we have a PayPal account right on the website. There's not a lot on it yet. The only thing, the yearbooks are on it. We can, we have a space to go into. The yearbooks are taken from the Aston Library actually set up. And that's from the first yearbook up through, I'm assuming, 2016? I'm not sure. I may look at my head. But anything that you can do, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Russ. Russ was very kind. He came into the TV studio with some other fellow alumni last week, and we did a Pendelco People in Program episode to try again to push the word out and get that information on the website. So we certainly, absolutely, will respond in kind and be happy to share our resources to really drive that, to get our 1%, to 2%, and then 4%, and at 8%, we'll keep it going. So I admire your work. Thank you for coming out and sharing that with us. We look forward to partnering with you to build up a strong alumni association for a great high school. Thank you.
Next, student representative of the board.
So may have been a very busy month at the Valley. Both the junior and senior proms were wonderful nights to remember. Just last week was Arts Alive, where members of the community were able to observe the artwork of many of the talented students that we have in our district. Also, last week, we held our first-ever fashion show, which was a huge success. AP testing and Q tests are now complete, and the students are very happy about that. All of the spring sports had successful seasons, especially the girls' softball team, which made playoffs and was named Chessmont Champions. Tomorrow is a very busy day at Sun Valley. During the day, our annual blood drive will be held. Then in the afternoon, the softball team will have their playoff game. And at night, the first annual spring luau will be held on the tennis courts. With the end of the year, quickly approaching, the next few weeks will be very busy.
And thank you for standing in. Change of our board meeting might, some of our regulars couldn't make it, so thank you for standing in. How at the end of the year finishing for you? But before the summer, you're going to be sad to see the school you're in.
I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Next, Dr. Steinoff, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Tinsley. We have a number of reports tonight, and recognizing this could be a late board meeting, we're going to see some of my time. And I'm going to yield that to Mr. Don Main, who is here to speak to the school board about some possible phasing changes in our recommendations for continued renovation work at the high school. Followed by Ms. Marshall, who will talk to us about the board's recommended, proposed final budget for the 2017-2018 school year. I'll turn it over to Mr. Main, and welcome back to the land of Pendelco.
Thank you. Also from our office, I have Ted Williams here this evening. Ted is heading up the construction administration on the phase that's currently happening at the high school in the cafeteria. And just in general, the contractors have met the dates in terms of getting off to a good start. If you go into the cafeteria or the kitchen, you see soil. So the equipment's out, the walls are down, the floor's up, the utilities are being run, so we're off to a good start there. So this evening, the presentation that we have is looking at potential future phases and approach to phases, phasing on the high school project. And the first couple slides are just some background slides, and you've seen all of these slides before, so I'll go through them pretty quickly. Please stop me if you have questions.
Am I not being reached in the distance?
Okay, so in terms of the existing conditions, that's the existing footprint of the school. And the master plan for the building includes three additions. A main entry addition to enlarge and enhance the main entry to the school. A nurse's addition to consolidate the main office area. And then an auditorium addition, which includes band and choir rooms. And through that addition, we're able to achieve the additional classroom. And through that addition, we're able to achieve the additional classroom square footage that we need to meet the current program of the building, and also, we're able to vacate the current auditorium, which offers a space for an auxiliary gym in the facility. Also, in the early planning, we did sort of an overview of the site and potential to enhance the outdoor athletic facilities on the campus, which would include upgrades to the various playing fields and potential turf replacement with a multi-use turf on the high school football stadium. So, one of the things here with the phasing that we talked about is the potential for the site work to be, that you can proceed with that site work as an independent project as you've been looking at smaller areas in the building and kind of working methodically through the facility. This is the master plan that we reviewed. Again, just, you know, those highlights on the far left is the auditorium addition in blue with the band choral in green above, which then vacates the existing auditorium. So, you see those areas of tan in the center of the building. That's the auxiliary gym to the left of the, of the main gym here. Expansion with the nurses' suite here, addition which consolidates everything here with the, with the main office area, enhancement to the, to the main entry of the building, and then re-upgrades to the science classrooms on the second floor of the classroom wing addition, and then renovations to the balance of the classroom wing for parity, and just bringing those spaces up to speed in terms of mechanicals and technology and casework. So, these were the 3Ds that we reviewed last. So, this is a view, bird's-eye view, looking at the nurses' addition, which is this area here, and this is the existing office area, and then this is the new main entry to the facility. And then the view from the opposite side with the, with the main entry in the foreground, and then the, the auditorium addition here on the left, and then a view back to the main entry. So, those were the, sort of, the state of the design as we last presented, and no real major changes to, to the program. Just some views of the main entry with taller ceiling and potential for there to be logos and imagery reflecting the different activities in the building. So, any questions on scope?
Did we change the layout of the main unit?
Yes.
When did that change? Have we seen that recently?
That is the same layout that we had before.
The court, the court's rotating.
Yeah, the court's rotating, and what that allows, whoops, here we go. And what that allows for is it allows, whoops, I hit my wrong button. Here we start. Okay, I'm going to stop. What that allows for is it allows for there to be bleachers on this side and this side of the court. The court would go this way. Currently, the court runs this way, and you have a single, very large bleacher bank here. So, that allows you to have designated home and visitor bleachers in the gymnasium. These bleachers are not removed, they're kept, and so if you wanted to have a large assembly or event in the space, you could utilize all three banks of bleachers for Any other questions on scope? So, as we look at phasing, just where we've been, as we go through these next couple slides, what's gray is work that's complete, or as we move through the phases, you'll see it turn to gray. So, you can sort of start to see the building as it goes through the phases, how the areas have been renovated. So, we started last summer with the restroom renovations, so all of these areas that are shaded are the shared restrooms and individual restrooms, such as these, throughout the building that were renovated last summer. The current phase, 2017 Summer Scope, includes renovation of the cafeteria and the kitchen, so comprehensive renovations in those areas. And here's the floor plan for that. As we reviewed with you before, it's upgrades to the servery, a more open servery area rather than the tight line that's in there, that was in there now. Right now, there's, it's wide open, but where everyone's sort of cattle-shooting through, this is a scatter system, so it works better in terms of efficiencies and reducing the lines as the students get their food. And then complete gut renovation of the kitchen to support that, and then the upgrades to the finishes in the cafeteria. And that's the 3D of the work that's happening this summer. So, here's where we move into potential future phases. What the, what the current plan is looking at is prioritizing or working on the classroom areas of the building first. And so, this, this phasing plan that we're sharing this evening reflects that. So, this would require that we would utilize modular classrooms, somewhere between 8 and 12, and we know roughly that it's that order of magnitude based on the classroom counts of the areas that are renovated, that are being renovated within each sub-phase of this project. However, we do need to sit and program. We may be able to subdivide some spaces, such as the library, which might reduce the number that's required ultimately, but we will need to have some modulators in the mix. And the reason being is that we don't feel comfortable proposing renovating or scheduling the renovations of the classroom areas all over a single summer, because really, there's no Plan B if it would run into a scheduling issue. Plus, we have science classrooms in the mix, which take a long time to renovate, a longer time to renovate, more similar to the timeframe it takes to renovate, like the kitchen associated with cafeteria, because there's a lot of utilities, and there's a lot of equipment, and so there's a lot of steps that have to happen in those renovations. So, in this scenario, we're looking at three phases, starting in the summer of 2018, renovating the Seawing Classroom here. That classroom does not have a high level of requirement of equipment, because we don't have any science classrooms in there. So, that ensures that the contractors are able to get their ordering and get all the materials there as they move into the two-story classroom wing. And then two additional phases, allowing the contractors to have access to half of that two-story classroom in the summer, but giving them through the fall to complete that construction, both second and first floor. And what that allows for is the contractors to be working on top of each other, which makes sense from utilities and a sequencing and sort of constructibility standpoint, and it also is helpful, because we don't have noise, we don't have them working over top of the students in occupied areas, or even if they're working second shift, able to contain that construction much better. And then a final phase from December of 18 through March of 19. So, that would complete the classroom areas of the building through that process. So, a subsequent project then would be the new construction, which could begin spring of 19 through summer of 2020, and that would be the duration that would be associated with constructing the auditorium addition, because that is a 12 to 14-month duration to build a building of that scale. And in the first spring, begin the construction on the nurses' addition and renovate the nurse, or, excuse me, renovate the balance of the, of the main entry and office over that first summer, so that's only out of operation over a summer period. And then that project's, again, starting in 19 and finishing summer of 20. That would allow for, in the second summer, then, the renovation of the areas that are domino spaces affected by the new construction. So, we could go in and renovate those classrooms over the summer, as well as be commissioning and opening up the auditorium. With completion of that second project, the only areas that would remain in the third project, which could be a summer project or potentially a spring in the summer project, because once your auditorium's online, you don't need the old auditorium, would be the completion of the athletic areas of the building, so renovation of the gym, or reconfiguration of the gym, and then the renovation of the locker and team areas. So, at that point, come fall of 2021, your building is great, which means that you have addressed it. The one area that you'll see here, and this, through planning, we've been able to take a light to no touch in this area of the building. This is the area of the building that's been most recently renovated and added in the, approximately 14 years ago. So, that's foreign language and some general classrooms in through this area, so leaving that area and not renovating. So, in terms of next steps, if this approach is making sense, through the summer of 2018, or, excuse me, for the summer of 18 through 19 classroom renovation projects, the goal would be to put the construction documents together through summer through fall, because we're seeing the economy, now that the economy's picked up, but later we get into spring, we're seeing it more difficult to get bidders for the project. So, by being able to bid the project from December to January, better, we anticipate a much better bidding pool than if we would be bidding the project February, March of next year. So, the goal would be to be out ahead of a lot of folks with the project to try to get, you know, first in line in terms of bidding for summer, summer school work in 2018. And then the construction then would take place from June of 18 through March of 19. If you're interested in concurrently looking at an athletic field master plan and construction project, that could run tandem as those projects can be bid independently, or you can actually contract for those through purchasing programs, where you're able to competitively bid it, bid it through, like KPN or Co-Stars or some of the procurement programs, statewide procurement programs. And so, the goal there would be to develop a master plan over this summer, come back with scope for board review in September, and from that point, with approval of a scope and a budget, put the construction documents together through the fall, so that we can get in for land development with the township, and then either bid that or, or, or put it out for pricing through one of the purchasing programs. And that work could be completed over the summer next, next year. We are doing a similar project, actually, right now with Ridley School District, where we're updating their, their stadium over a summer construction period.
We could potentially be seeing an upgrade of our athletic fields by next fall?
Yes.
And it wouldn't affect any of the other construction projects? They can run concurrently?
They can run concurrently, because they really are independent of each other. And the, the field work, especially the turf and the track, those types of things, are specialty contractors. There really is a handful of contractors. So, if you, if you did that work as a part of a larger project, you'd be bidding it through a general contractor that would be marking that work up. If you work either through a direct bid or a purchase program, you would be working directly with those contractors, and since their work isn't really tied to anything that's happening in the building, that can happen concurrently, and, you know, you don't necessarily need to have a general contractor, you know, over top of that marking that work up, because that work can, you know, contractor directly for.
With summer of 2018, the project construction being the outside athletic track and football field, correct?
That is, that's the one that we're contemplating because of its use. And that would permit us to get all of our fall sports and some of our spring sports on that field in the stadium itself. But I was, I was going to add that we think at an upcoming meeting with the board, we will also want to talk about the other fields we have. There are a lot of fields that, at the Sun Valley property, none of which have really had any considerable investment in them. So, when we talk about baseball field A, baseball field B, softball field, to varying degrees, they all need some attention, but you begin, you know, by taking off one way at a time, and that main stadium would be the area that we think we can accommodate the most amount of teams. Soccer, you know, hockey, cross, football, the track is really starting to get in good shape as well. So, that would be the area that probably we'll look at first.
So, I know this question isn't really directed toward you, being an engineer, but do we have, so we project to start this in the summer. Now, of course, football starts in August, so do we have an idea of when it would be finished?
Well, the, you know, we would set that up as a part of the, the contract, that there, as soon as we can get in there, as soon as we can get in with, with spring sports being over, that they would be here. And again, it behooves us to be out early in terms of pricing, but that they be there and they start, and then we give them a date in mid-August that the work has to be completed, similar to other projects, you know, sign of liquidated damages, that they would, you know, would not meet that. But a lot of these, the folks that do the turf fields, I mean, they're geared up for this, they know they've got a window of time to do this, and so they're, you know, especially if you go through the purchase, purchase program, KPN or one of the purchase programs, you can, you've got a pretty good handle on who your labor's going to be and past performance, so.
We just want a backup plan installed, because if this is a summer with a lot of rain, we don't want anybody sitting around with workout, no work being done, so we just want this. I don't want to, you know, I don't think it's a good suggestion for middle of August, that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
So, you know, all the construction that we've been through before.
Right. And one thing we've done with, with field projects is we've actually documented the typical weather delays. We've put into specification to assume a higher number than that, using local data, and have that requirement in there, so that they have to bring two, you know, they have to bring two teams in or whatever they have to do, you know, assuming, assuming a bad
So, there's nothing for us to act on now, but I think, especially in June, we meet as a board, we have a workshop and so on, we can discuss this even further, discuss the phases and go from there. Obviously, I would assume, are we expecting you, or even if it's just Brian, at least for like the June-July meetings, to give us updates and say the words, on time, under budget, for the cafeteria?
Yeah, with the current project, we'd be happy to do that.
Right. Yeah, so, what I'm saying is, I guess what I'm saying is, we're going to be talking about this in the next couple of weeks, or next couple, you know, next couple of weeks. So, whether it's yourself, Ted, or even just Brian, you know, when you guys come back with us, let's know which month where we are. So, but as of right now, I guess, from the cafeteria perspective too, we are, I think I had a schedule. Is that right? Cafeteria?
We're on schedule for sure. I mean, in terms of, yeah, and, yeah, it's, everything is looking good.
Material as well? Material and everything too?
Yeah, shop drawings have been, have been flowing. In general, all the primes have, there's a software that everyone is sharing called Procore, that you can see everybody's activity in an online project management software. And so, there's, you know, daily, there isn't a day that goes by where there isn't a lot of, a lot of back and forth with shop drawings, and so they are, everyone's engaged in.
That's good.
Thank you. Don. Thank you. Appreciate it.
The Orioles are off to a start.
At this moment, yeah.
Of course. Next, I'd like to turn my time over to Mr. Tracy Marshall, our Assistant Administrator, to discuss the proposed budget.
So, tonight, the board is going to be acting on the proposed final budget, asking for them to pass that resolution tonight. We spoke last week about the budget, so tonight, we're just going to give you an overview of basically what we talked about last week. In January, the board adopted the opt-out resolution that we weren't going to raise taxes beyond the Act One Index, Pendelco's Act One Index is 3%. Tonight, as I said, is the night that we're going to adopt the proposed final budget. In May, on May 1st, we were notified of the amount of the state allocation for property tax reduction funding. I'll talk about that a little more. And in June, we'll be doing a final budget presentation with the final budget adoption on June 28th. This budget reflects a millage of 28.0583, that's an additional .845 mils, and that's a 2.99% increase. Expenditures in this budget top the $61 million mark. Tonight, the board will also be accepting the home set exclusion, the state property tax reduction allocation. We have 7,017 approved home set properties. The maximum assessed value reduction is going to be 6,000. The maximum assessed value reduction is going to be $6,960. So that will be reflected on those approved homesteads on their tax bill as a tax reduction of $195.29. Last year, our homestead reduction amount was about $184. That's, our allocation pretty much stayed the same, but we actually have a few less homesteads approved this year than we did last year. For 2017-18, the median home assessment in Pendelco is $115,800. So the annual, the annual cost of the average taxpayer will be $3,249.15. So from last year of the same median assessment, that would represent a proposed increase of $7.86 per month. As you know, our revenue comes from three sources, local, state, and federal. Oops, sorry. Our state revenue is about 28%, and you'll notice that our local revenue is 71%. Of that, 71% of local tax revenue, property tax accounts for 61% of that. So as every other school district, we are, we are funded by the taxpayers of our district. Our expenditures are broken up into four major categories. Instruction being the largest, 55% of our budget goes towards direct instruction. Support services is the second largest piece of our pie, $20 million. That includes facility costs, utilities, transportation, pupil services. Operations is our 3,000 series, that includes athletics and student activities. And then financing is the debt service that we currently have in place, still paying for building Coburn, for renovations to Northlake, for our beginning expenditures that we've done for Sun Valley. We will be looking again this year to go out and borrow again, so that we can continue the Sun Valley project. Expenditures in our district are broken up over 10 different categories. The largest one being salaries, which is currently at 44%. When you couple that with the 27% in benefits, that accounts for 71% of our budget. So as would be expected, the school district's budget is driven by people. So 71% of our expenditures go directly for our staff and costs. Oops, sorry, flipping through that speed quickly. So in the past, our village rates have remained under 3%. So we've continued that for the 2017-18 school year. So that's what we will be asking for the board to act on tonight, is a 2.99% increase for the proposed final budget. That completes the presentation. Are there any questions from the board? No questions? Okay, that will be on the agenda tonight?
One thing that I feel compelled to remind the board is that the increases that school districts may see throughout the state Commonwealth from the proposed budget that is being discussed in Harrisburg, this time the proposed government budget, those increases in school funding will not be large enough to offset mandatory increases that school boards are being asked to pay for the pension contributions. And when we look at where our pension contributions were just five years ago, for the employer, pension contribution was at about $1.2 million, to a number that is close to just over $4 million now. It's difficult to recognize that as the employer, as the school board, we have no way to avoid those costs, because they are mandatory costs. Employees have consistently been making their contribution, their share, they never share that. They don't have the ability to not pay that. And the employer doesn't have the ability to not pay that either. But you can imagine what we could do with an additional $3 million that now has to go off to Harrisburg to pay for our employer contribution on pensions. So it's a real problem. And I applaud the legislators who are trying to do something about it. My understanding is that it does not include any reduction in the employer contribution rate. So while we are at 32% right now, we can expect that it could go as high as 36% before it begins to moderate and come back down. So I want to compliment our business administrator for continuing to work to find ways for us to manage our finances, so that we are meeting our obligations and not having to cut staff and not having to cut programs, making sure that we're still offering a really strong and attractive instructional program for the kids at Pendelco. So thank you for your work on that, Tracy.
And related to the budget, you know, it's our responsibility to make sure that the district meets its carrying and future financial obligations. So even though we didn't have any questions tonight, you know, I'm gracious and I'm appreciative of all, all the board members for providing input, giving questions for us, the residents, to the business staff, and specifically Tracy. I just wanted to make one comment, is Tracy's committed herself to make sure that the financial information is clear and accessible to all of us and to the public. Her and her team, Eric and everyone, have been huge assets to minimize our risk creating and managing our budget while helping oversee many of our services, so. With that, let's go to comments by members of the board. Announcements for the public, in accordance with Act 48, the Sunshine Law, the board met an executive session this evening to discuss litigation and personnel issues. Additionally, we will be adding two agenda items, 10-1-7, the Director of Teaching and Learning appointment, and 10-1-8, Northlake Middle School Cross Country Club. Number nine on the agenda is public comments. Seeing none, items for board review. Motion is to approve agenda items 10.01, Personnel Professional, on page three. Continues on page four. Page five, Personnel Classified. That concludes, close to the bottom with page six. This references Pendelco Budget 2016-2017, the Act 93 plans, the PDEA agreement, the PDESPA agreement, the PDSSPA agreement, and the PA School Code Section 1108B. It is the administrative recommendation to approve all personnel items as presented. Do I have this motion? Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion passes. Tonight, the board will utilize a consent agenda to approve agenda items 10.203 through 10.15. Does any board member wish to remove any item from the consent agenda? If not, I need a motion to approve agenda items 10.203 through 10.15. Note, all contracts, preparations, solicitation of bids are subject to review and approval from solicitor. Do I have this motion? Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion passes. 10.16, the proposed final budget for 2017-2018. Mr. Dohmer?
The proposed final budget for 2017-2018. Proposed final budget is being presented tonight, May 23rd, 2017. Passage enables the document to become public and a budget hearing to be scheduled to the approval of 2017-2018 proposed final budget. Motion is to approve the proposed final budget for 2017-2018 as presented. Do I have this motion?
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion passes. 10.17, the Director of Teaching and Learning. Mr. Doherty?
The motion is to approve Mr. Eric Kaminka as the Pendelco Director of Teaching and Learning, effective July 1st, 2017, at a salary of $135,428, in accordance with the Pendelco Act 93 compensation plan. Do I have this motion?
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed? Motion passes.
10.18, Northlake Middle School Cross Country Club. Ms. Jones?
10.18, Northlake Middle School Cross Country Club. Motion is to approve the establishment of a co-ed cross-country running club for Northlake Middle School students, effective for the fall season of the 2017-2018 school year, and creating a coaching position earning seven units. Do I have this motion?
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Posed? Motion passes. Next, comments by members of the public. For the board, first, I just wanted to say, the school board could not be more pleased to welcome Mr. Kaminka as the new Director of Teaching. He was an ideal candidate for this position and brings a depth of knowledge to the admin building. He will continue to be an asset to our district and valuable leader.
I just want to echo those comments. I'm a Coburn mom, and my daughter started Coburn when Mr. Kaminka started Coburn. And I've just been thrilled with the job that you've done. I appreciate the transition over to charity and then back again, and the construction and all that, and your leadership in both seeking acknowledgements for our schools, the blue ribbon and the green ribbon and those sorts of things, but also how you've just cared for, for kids. You've really been an open, open-door policy kind of guy, where parents knew they felt they could go to you with concerns, and kids felt encouraged and supported by you. So we're excited to have you move up and thank you for your service so far.
Very, thank you.
I too echo Ms. Stone, but I do want to remind everyone, he's still at Coburn until the end of the year.
Yep, I want to thank the board for their support of the administration's recommendation of Mr. Kaminka. We entered into the search for a director by encouraging applicants from outside the district as well as inside the district. We had over 40 strong applicants that consider, interviewed eight, came down to two finalists, and found that the best candidate for the job was right beside Pendelco. And it's wonderful that when we can promote from within, when we have that talent. I respected the work that I've done with, with Eric, and seen him do great work from the time that we hired him to take over Coburn. And I'm thrilled that we can expand his zone of influence to affect the grades K through 12. So again, I do thank the board for their confidence in the administrators that we have here, and we look forward to working with their continued search of district. Thank you.
Future meetings, Wednesday, June 21st is our study session here at the Silver Center. And our next regular board meeting will be Wednesday, June 28th. Rest you for a term now.